So we are going to wait just a few more minutes because we were waiting on streaming. And so we are, I will let you know when we get that turned on. All right, I am going to call our meeting to order is April 16th, 2024. It's 5:31 PM and we are having our city council regular meeting. If we could start with a roll call, please, Ben.
Counselor Woodruff, here. Mayor Pro Tem Buehl.
Here.
Counselor Yazi.
Here.
Mayor Yusef.
Here.
And Counselor Bossmans.
Here.
May we have the introduction of the translator, please?
Yes. Hi, everyone. Can you hear my audio okay? I think you can.
Yes, we can. Sorry, we can hear you.
Great. Now Diego Pons here today with my colleague Ruth Andrade from the CLC. Here as usual to offer interpretation, simultaneous interpretation here on Zoom in English and Spanish. After I finish saying this in both languages, we'll start the interpretation. You'll see that globe icon is going to appear after I'm done. And it'll say interpretation. I'll ask you to select that globe icon and to choose your preferred language. And if you're joining the meeting on your cellphone or your tablet today, please look for the more button or the three dots button to select your preferred language this other way. So if you're not fully bilingual, strongly encourage you here on Zoom to select your preferred language to use the interpretation in case anyone were to speak in the opposite language. And if you're bilingual, feel free to listen to everyone in their original language. Thank you so much for that. Así que buenas tardes a todos y todas. Yo soy Diego Pons. Estoy aquí con mi colega Ruth Andrade de parte del CLC. Gracias por estar hoy en su reunión y para utilizar la interpretación simultánea aquí en Zoom en inglés y en español. Cuando yo termine de dar las instrucciones ahora vamos a activar interpretación. En ese momento se activa la interpretación y usted va a poder ver ese icono de globo de la tierra que irá a interpretación ahí abajo en la derecha de su pantalla. Por favor asegúrese de elegir ese icono globo de la tierra y por favor seleccione su idioma preferido. Y si usted está asistiendo hoy a la reunión en su celular o en su tableta, por favor busque la opción que dice more, que quiere decir más en inglés, o tal vez el botón de tres puntos para que pueda elegir su idioma preferido de esta otra manera. Así que si usted no es completamente bilingüe, yo le voy a aconsejar que elija su idioma preferido para que puede utilizar interpretación cuando alguien está hablando en el otro idioma. Y si usted sí es bilingüe, sienta-se libre escuchar a todos hoy en su idioma original. Muchas gracias.
Thank you so much. We will move on now to actually, we have a motion.
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion to amend the agenda to move item 12.1 to after 4.3 to streamline and have a break for freshmen to celebrate everybody.
Second.
Council discussion. Roll call, please, Ben.
Counselor Bossmans.
Yes.
Mayor Yusef.
Yes.
Counselor Yazi.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Buehl.
Yes.
And Counselor Woodruff.
Yes.
I'm also going to make a motion to amend the agenda to include public comment on item 17 under item eight. So in item eight, we would take public comment on items nine, 10, 12, and 17.
I'll second. Council discussion. Roll call, please, Ben.
Counselor Woodruff.
Yes.
Counselor Yazi. Counselor Bossmans.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Buehl.
Yes.
And Mayor Yusef.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, we will move on now to open remarks by mayor and council, council team first. Does anyone have any opening remarks? Okay, I actually do. Because this is my last council meeting that I am presiding over as mayor. So I wanted to say a few words. And I was actually going to get up to the podium so I could speak directly to my council team. But now that it's kind of changed around a little bit, I'm going to try to actually speak to you here. I had a very long detailed speech kind of written, and then I decided to scratch that whole thing and just kind of try to talk directly to you guys. Because I think that we have had a tremendously impactful year. I think we have accomplished together as this team so much. And I thought about going through the list of all that we accomplished. But literally, it took Dave Woodruff and I 25 minutes to go through the presentation that we had for the State of the City at the Eggs and Issue Forum for the Chamber of Commerce. So I decided not to bore you all with that. But what I do want to talk about is that this is, I'm going on my eighth year of service. I've had the opportunity to work now with four different council teams. And I would, and also with different staff. This is the first year that we've had three of our account, council appointee positions filled by full-time employees, and it's making a tremendous, tremendous difference. And so what I really want to talk about is, is, is not necessarily the, I didn't want to go through the list of our accomplishments. And I didn't, I really wanted to talk about our success as a team. Because under our council manager form of government, no one individual can accomplish anything without the, without the support of their team behind them. And for that, I've heard so many people get up and espout, you know, spout off the many different things that they accomplished during their term. I think we as a team and as a staff have accomplished, and as a city staff have accomplished so much this past year. And I feel personally extremely thankful to be a part of that team. And I just want to express that sincere gratitude to everyone here at that table. There's a few things that we have done that I think have been tremendously impactful in our ability to get some of our work done. First of all, the strategic appointment of our three council appointees has been tremendously, has made a tremendous impact on our, on our ability to get through our agendas. And that includes our city manager, Jose Madrigal. He's been here for three years. Our city attorney, Mark Morgan, who is new this past year, and our full-time municipal judge, Matt Margeson, who is new this past year as well. I think it has made a tremendous difference to get our three appointees on board and up to speed. And fulfilling those positions with skilled, motivated employees has made a tremendous difference because as a council, we set high-level policy. They run the day-to-day operations of the city. And I think together as a team, we've done a tremendous job. And also, I think very impactful this past year has been some of the transformative changes that have truly, if you will, revolutionized the way we work together as a council team and the way we conduct our businesses, our business. From our, the way we run our council meetings to the way we act as a council team one-on-one and to the way, the way we, you know, work, work just together in, in all of our business as a team. And I just want to thank our team for, for putting up with me as I adapt, as I adapted to those changes. It was, it's been a lot. It's been challenging. I also thank our city attorney for pushing us to make those changes. But it's, it's been an adapt, you know, a lot of progress on our part and a lot of change on our part. But I think it's been extremely impactful for so many reasons. Primarily because we can run efficient meetings, we can get work done, and we have civil discourse. We disagree, we disagree civilly, and we move on. And we support the majority decision of our city council team. And I think that has been a tremendous change here at the city of Durango that I for one feel very proud of having presided over those meetings. And that has been a real sense of accomplishment for me. And then I think as the third, I would suggest that, that we have, the third thing I think we continue to do and have done is our, our focus on strategic planning and budgeting. And this is the bedrock of what we do as a council team in conjunction with staff, but of our approval process to productively move forward as a council and as a city. And I am very proud of our efforts in that. So I really wanted to thank my council teams, each and every one of you teammates. I want to thank you for your dedication. I want to thank you for your commitment to the city of Durango. Serving is hard. It's a challenge. We are all put to the test at times, but I've really appreciated the opportunity to serve with you. I want to thank our city manager, Jose Madrigal. It has been a pleasure working with you and watching you develop over these past three years. And I think we've done some really great work together. I thank our city attorney, Mark, or you have come on and really helped us do a lot of things differently in the city of Durango for the better and for the positive. And I think we've made some really great efforts. So I want to thank this team up here on the dais. I really appreciate the work of all that all of you have done. I want to thank our, also our community. I want to thank our residents for their support and encouragement along the way. I have a team of colleagues that provide me with an unbelievable amount of encouragement and support. And I could not have done this without them. But more importantly, I could not have done this without, I thought I was going to make it, but without the support of my family. Because this job takes a tremendous amount of time, energy, focus, dedication. And I know that they have put up with me being distracted, being stressed, sleepless nights, the whole thing that we all go through at some point during the year that we serve. So I want to thank my husband and my children. And with that, I have to pass it. So I'll pass it to you guys if you want to make any comments.
You still have a year up here, you know.
Right.
Okay, you're not leaving.
Right, yes. I do, but yes, and I'm happy to serve as a, as a counselor again. Those are, those are fun times, good opportunities. So with that, we need to move on to our election of mayor. We're going to move on to the procedure. Do I have a motion or may I make the motion? Would you all allow me to make the motion? May I have the privilege of making a motion to, to select Mayor Pro Tem Jessica Buehl as our mayor for the following year? Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Any council discussion? Well, I will add one thing because one of the things I did want to say is that I am passing this torch with the utmost of confidence in our ability to move forward productively. And positively, I know that Jessica is doing, going to do an excellent job. And I'm going to be looking forward to watching her in that role. And with that, may I have a roll call, please, Ben?
Counselor Yazi.
Yes.
Mayor Yusef.
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff.
Yes.
Counselor Bossmans.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Buehl.
Yes.
I'm glad she accepted. And may we have a motion for the election of the mayor pro tem, please?
I move to appoint Counselor Gilda Yazif as mayor pro tem for the next year.
I'll second.
Council discussion. I will just say that I think too, Counselor Yazif, that you're going to do an excellent job as mayor pro tem. It's an important role as well. And you may find yourself having to step up and step into place. And we'll count on you for that. And it's important. I've seen you do it already. And I know you're going to do a great job. May we have a roll call, please, Ben?
Counselor Bossmans.
Yes.
Mayor Buehl.
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff.
Yes.
Counselor Yazi.
Yes.
And Counselor Yusef.
Yes, Counselor Yusef. I love it. All right, with that, let's do what? Sure. Okay, may we have a motion for 12.1, please?
Oh, okay, because we moved this up, we have to take public comment. Sorry. And so if there's anyone that wants to speak on 12.1, a resolution approving the appointment of Bob Brammer as Assistant City Manager and Bryce Current as Police Chief. Does anyone, I'm going to open the public comment.
And so mayor, no one has signed up for this item via the QR code online. However, there may be someone in the audience.
I don't see anyone in the audience, so I'll close public comment. Do we have a motion? No, I haven't made the motion yet.
I move to appoint Bob Brammer as Assistant City Manager and Bryce Current as Police Chief.
I'll second.
A council discussion? That's right, it's me now.
Well, I'm thrilled to have both of these appointments. I'm very excited to have Chief Brammer now as our assistant city manager. I know you're going to be a great addition to our team. I look forward to working with you much more closely. And it's going to be fun to have you working with us on some of these city council initiatives. And Chief Current, I don't, I'm not sure. There he is. So very, very happy to have you joining us within our team with your years of experience, with your local knowledge of our community, and with your dedication and commitment to Durango. Thank you so much for your willingness to serve.
Just mayor and council, after this vote, if we could just have a few minutes to present something for Bob, which I'm not to get used to saying, and then also just giving Bryce the chief. I think there's a presentation for that portion, so it'll take a few minutes after the vote.
Yeah, we'll do both of those presentations, then we'll do the oaths, and then we'll take a 15-minute break.
Perfect.
Reset the dais. Perfect. Okay, can I have a roll call?
Mayor Buehl.
Yes.
Counselor Yusef.
Yes.
Counselor Bossmans.
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Yazi.
Yes.
Okay, first and foremost to Bob now. But always a police chief for sure. On behalf of the city of Durango as well as the police department, they wanted to present this to you for your service with our police department with the distinguishness of keeping our community safe. And while you still do that as an assistant city manager, I know it's definitely a different role. And I wanted to thank you for taking a chance in coming into the city manager's office and leading us in a new, a new way. But really appreciate the service that you provided the city, the police department, and our citizens. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if I was supposed to say anything or not. Thank you very much. This is incredible. Just seeing those years, that's almost 20 years of service to the city of Durango. Five as chief, and it's been a complete honor. Bill served this community, men and women of the Durango Police Department and this council. Always been extremely supportive of us and be able to help our efforts. And I'm real excited to see Bryce step into this role and know that it's going to be in great hands. I know we have a little ceremony to pass him to the torch here to get him official. But I really want to say thank you to everybody for all this. And I know it's not a little retirement speech because I'm not retiring. I'm just being across the street here. So yeah, that would be later, but thank you so much for everything and get Bryce to do it. Yeah, we'll all go, Bryce, he's 21-plus-year cop, came from San Juan, Chile, in Asat, New Mexico. He's been selected for here to be chief. There's a little ceremonial aspect to this, so he's getting promoted, so I'm going to take his badge. From him, which is the ceremonial crest of our organization, it's the shield that goes back to the Knights of the Union with the crest working union trust to the sort of our house. My turn to present you with mine.
Here.
We can do the mayor first.
Where do I stand? Tell me.
We will do an oath of office, and if you could just raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Jessica Buehl.
Do solemnly declare that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly declare that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Durango.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Durango.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of mayor of the city of Durango.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of mayor of the city of Durango. Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, if you wouldn't mind raising your right hand. I state your name.
I, Gilda Yazif.
Do solemnly declare that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Durango.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Durango.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of mayor pro tem of the city of Durango.
And I will faithfully perform the duties of mayor pro tem of the city of Durango.
Congratulations.
Okay, we're going to take a 15-minute break for refreshments and to reset the dais Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order. We are on number five, presentations and proclamations. We have three proclamations to give. I'm gonna be up there for a while saying whereas a lot of times, so bear with me. So let's start with the 5.1 proclamation recognizing Earth Week. Can I have the recipient come on up and we will meet you at the dais? Okay, come on. You can just stand up here with me. I'm going to read it and then give it to you and then you guys can say, this is odd to look at you this way. Okay, proclamation recognizing Earth Week, April 15th through the 22nd, 2024. Whereas in the spring of 1970, US Senator Gaylord Nelson created Earth Day as a way to highlight the need to protect the air, waters, natural environment and public health from the damages of unchecked pollution. And whereas Earth Day is recognized nationally and globally in April and will occur on Monday, April 22nd for the year 2024. And whereas the city of Durango will celebrate Earth Day with Earth Day Durango, fiscal sponsor, the Community Foundation, serving Southwest Colorado, and the Four Corners Office of Resource Efficiency, Citizens, Businesses and Organizations on Saturday, April 20th, 2024, with a parade along Main Avenue and an event at Buckley Park and an electric vehicle ride and drive at the La Plata County Fairgrounds. And whereas the city of Durango recognizes its role in empowering citizens, businesses and organizations in our shared efforts conserving national natural resources and reducing waste and pollution. And whereas Durango is a community that shares the planet Earth with all other human communities and living things. Now therefore, as the mayor of the city of Durango, I do hereby proclaim the week of April 15th through the 22nd, 2024 to be Earth Week. And encourage citizens to celebrate by learning about what the city of Durango and community organizations are doing to protect our planet's natural systems by exploring what individual citizens can personally do to help reduce negative impacts on our natural environment and by taking time to connect with and appreciate the beauty of our earth and all the life it supports. And then you can say a few words.
So I'm Gail Harris and I'm our team lead for organizing Earth Day Durango. And I want to say first of all, thank you for all the work that you do as city council. It takes a lot of work and we appreciate it, all the work you do for the city. And also thank you for all the work that the city council has taken that recognizes the importance of preserving our environment, ensuring we leave a livable world for future generations. To me, that's one of my most important issues and I'm glad that we as a community are working towards that. And that we recognize, you know, the negative impacts of human caused pollution and environmental degradation. And I appreciate all the actions that city council has taken such as the 2022 strategic plan, comprehensive plan, sustainability plan from 2017. And the importance of working with communities around the world. We all have to do this together as recognized in some of the resolutions that we've passed. I also appreciate that on April 20th, we have a free transit day. We have the EV ride and drive. We have the EV ride and drive, we have Buckley Earth Day, and we have Bluegrass Meltdown. What a great day to showcase our our local transit system and to have it be free. And hopefully, we will not have a parking problem and everyone will bike, ride, use people power, or the transit system. And I invite all of you to come to Earth Day and help us celebrate. That would be delightful. Buckley Park, eleven, two, three.
Thank you very much, Gail. I just second everything that she said. I'm the new executive director for the Four Corners Office for Resource Efficiency, Four Corps, and we're in conjunction with Earth Day Festival, hosting the Earth Day EV Ride and Drive at La Plata County Fairgrounds and the REX Center. And wanted to second you, thank you for sponsoring the Free Transit Day with the city of Durango. We hope everybody either buses, bikes, walks, or takes other people power to get to and from their events that day and all week. And yeah.
I'm Heather Herb. I'm a resident of the city of Durango and I just wanted to thank city council, ditto. But it's more than just the proclamation. It's all the work you've been doing and I just super appreciate the direction that the city's headed. The Sustainability Department and teaching, both engaging and educating our citizens to be better stewards of the planet. So thanks for all the work you're doing. It's needed now more than ever.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna stay up here. Is that okay? Okay. We're gonna move on to item five point two proclamation recognizing Arbor Week. Do I have someone accepting? Yes, here we go. Perfect. Hi. Okay, Arbor Week, April fifteenth through April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska and is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas Durango, Colorado has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its enhancement of its urban forest. And whereas the Parks and Recreation Department of the city of Durango will assist citizens, businesses, and organizations in making Durango a more beautiful place to live and do business. Now, therefore, I, as the mayor of the city of Durango, do hereby proclaim the week of April fifteenth through April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four to be Arbor Week. And urge citizens to celebrate by planting trees and experience the importance of trees by spending time outside enjoying the community forest. You wanna say? Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. I'm Matt B. Sicker, the city arborist. This Friday, the nineteenth, we're gonna celebrate Arbor Day in Santa Rita Park. We're gonna plant nine trees with schoolchildren. If you have some time, we would love to see you. There's also fun activities for the kids. There was a coloring contest, a tree themed art show at the REX Center, a library book display about trees, a promo video with fun tree facts, and a scavenger hunt for fairy houses that were hidden in trees. And there's awards for those fairy houses. So I hope to see you Friday. Thank you. Ten to ten to two, ten to ten to four thirty. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, five point three proclamation recognizing National nine-one-one Telecommunicator Week. Oh, oh, perfect. Awesome. National nine-one-one Telecommunicator Week, April fourteenth through April twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of public safety is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers, firefighters, and community members is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained by Durango-La Plata Emergency Communications Center. And whereas public safety telecommunications are the first first responders in our community, the single vital like for our police, fire, and paramedics, and are the most critical contact our community members will have with emergency services. And whereas each nine-one-one public safety dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now, therefore, I, as mayor of Durango, do hereby proclaim the second full week of April, two thousand and twenty-one. That says two thousand and twenty-one on there. I'm like, wait, that's not the right year. Twenty twenty-four, that should be, as you just read it, as National nine-one-one Education Month. I call upon all government officials, parents, teachers, school administrators, caregivers, business leaders, nonprofit organizations, and the people of the United States to observe this month with training, events, and activities to educate the public on nine-one-one and its services. You wanna say anything?
Council, I'm Katie Fox, Operations Manager at the nine-one-one center. Thank you all so much for your support of our center. I'm honored to accept this on the behalf of our hardworking staff. We really do see the myriad ways that council, city manager, the assistant city managers support us up there. Our staff is excellent and they they are working very hard. So thank you for recognizing that and thank you for reading all those proclamations on your first night as mayor.
Absolutely. And just a quick note for the council, we are going through an accreditation process with nine-one-one. This week, we had examiners coming in to the office and I got to meet with them this morning and they had nothing but pleasant things to say about the culture that has been built in the nine-one-one communications department and all of the good things that we're doing and making sure that we're following the industry best practices. So a big thank you to Katie and Zita for all the work that you're doing and leading that division department. For bigger and greater things for the city of Durango. Thank you.
Okay, moving along, we are at item six, city manager updates, information only.
Yes, Mayor and council, it's just information only. There is no presentation for this. You'll find it in your packet, just letting you know the status of the funding, final grant reports that was distributed by the United Way on our behalf.
Excellent. Okay, number seven, committee, board, and liaison reports. Any counselors have items under that?
Yeah, I'll try to go real quick here. Had a Chamber of Commerce board meeting this morning. We talked a lot about downtown's next step and how there's a survey conducted previously and how there's kind of a small percentage of downtown business owners. So they're gonna try to hold a downtown stakeholders meeting to discuss the programs and timeframes and that sort of thing. So I'd have to know that, you know, we would be interested in, you know, being a part of that process about, you know, what what the local business, downtown businesses think about the next steps. And yeah, there's also some bills coming through the state legislature that could impact business in our region and statewide. So they're really paying attention to what some of those bills are and how they could potentially impact our local economy. I also attended the Economic Development Alliance meeting on the ninth bell. Let you go with that since you're the liaison. Also attended the ribbon cutting at the Durango Airport for Phase One A. Man, if you haven't been to go check that out yet, super impressive for what they did in a pretty short window. Kudos to Tony and if you were there or watched it, it was like forty-five minutes of thank yous. It was amazing. So a lot of a lot of great people that all put forth a lot of effort into getting that to where it is and really looking forward to where that kind of propels things going for Phase One B starting in the fall. We had a joint nine-hour board meeting yesterday, so it's great to hear what nine-hour is doing within the community and also kind of really touch base about what we're all doing and what we can do collaboratively. I had my office hours today, which was awesome. We talked about wage justice, O-five sales tax reauthorization, community growth, and tourism. So a lot of a lot of rounded out topics of conversation. So yeah, been pretty busy.
Thank you, Dave. Okay, I also went to the the Terminal One A opening and it's just beautiful. So thank you, Tony, for all the work that you put into making that happen. And then on April third, I did attend a candidate forum for the police chiefs and they were all very talkative and they were all excellent. But we got our chief. And after that, I went to the urban, the URA dinner that Tommy was sponsoring for a conference that he was helping with here in Durango. So I had the opportunity to chat with other city counselors from Colorado, like Lake City and so forth, about their urban renewal efforts. So we had interesting conversations around TIF. And then I went to the nine-hour joint meeting yesterday. That was real interesting. Also, like what Dave said, it was it was a good update to hear what they're thinking about for the future. And then I would like to make an announcement that on April thirtieth, we're having the first annual Southwest Housing Summit, and that's gonna be at the Doubletree. And it's gonna be like from eight to five PM, but it should be on the the Housing Alliance website. But it would be nice if we could get other people to come to the summit. Thank you.
And I'll just quickly, I had a meeting with the mayor's youth advisory council. And they're getting ready to, of course, conclude their year, but very good year with the MIAC group. I think it was just a really, it was a really strong group of students that were really dedicated and committed to their to their roles. And I wanted to thank all of the counselors for taking the time to meet with them. I think that was really powerful for the the students to be able to see all of the council team. And I mean, we were pretty much present at almost all the meetings all year, and I think that's impactful. So I just wanted to thank you guys for that and wish the MIAC team luck as they conclude their year. It's a great group of students.
Okay, and then I'll briefly go over some things that I had. I had council office hours after our last meeting. And so it was great. We talked about the twenty or two thousand and five sales tax, talked about visit Durango, some engagement and inclusion that they're doing there with our tourism efforts and outreach, talked about Smart One Sixty, the community park at Three Springs. So that was great. I too was at Colorado Downtown, Inc., the conference that was here. They brought a lot of people into town, so it was great to see how a small conference can be held here in in Durango. I did want to give a shout out to Scott Shine, our Community Development Director, who received Downtowner of the Year. And also, and I might, I didn't write this down, and so I'm remembering off the top of my head, but I think Savannah Lidle and her team received Downtown, a Downtown Vision award as well. And I don't remember the name of it, but it was, yeah, they were both given awards at that Colorado Downtown Conference. I had the Alliance Board meeting. We appointed a new board member, Elizabeth Howe, to fill a vacancy. And then we also expanded or revised our bylaws to expand the board. They want more diverse candidates on the Alliance Board, and so we're gonna be adding two more seats to fill at the end of the year. We, let's see, what else did we do? Oh, we talked about Project Run. So we just, I don't know if council remembers this, we just approved the grant, the Ready Grant for to focus for the Alliance to focus on childcare. The Ready Grant we did last year has been focusing on helping our workforce become educated in terms of like professional development, leadership, and that sort of thing. And they're just launching launching their first sprint with with that. And it's open online now. I don't have the website in front of me, but if you go to the Alliance, it's under Project Run. It's a great program and I think it's gonna be fantastic for our, some of our leaders in our workforce to kind of go through. It's a free program all through the grant. What they've done to leverage those funds is is amazing. So that's great. I also had the investor meeting after that where, yeah, there was all that and more. Durango Ribbon Cutting, if you have not been to the airport in a while, that new space and facility is amazing. Tony has worked for years to try to get our airport expansion going and he finally made it work with some creative funding, lots of grants. The space is beautiful. I'm super excited to see what the renovation looks like. And then the addition with the baggage area and the new TSA and stuff as he keeps going. And then, yes, we had our nine-hour council meeting yesterday. So it's been a busy couple of weeks. And then just for information only, seven point one Airport Commission Quarterly Report is in our packets. So we will move on now to item eight, public comment on agenda items. It's gonna be items nine, ten, twelve, and seventeen, we added. And so now we'll play a video with instructions for public comment.
And Mayor, there is no one who has signed up for items nine, ten, or twelve right now.
Okay. Or seventeen.
Excuse me, and no one other under item seventeen either.
Okay, excellent. Moving on. Number nine, consent agenda. May we have a reading of the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mayor. Item nine point one is approval of meeting minutes, and those are approval of minutes from the April second, two thousand and twenty-four city council regular meeting. There are no items under item, under nine point two, final reading of ordinances, no items under nine point three, adoption of resolutions by consent. Under nine point four, approval of of other administrative items. We have nine point four point one, approval of a resolution to extend to extend term of three creative economy commission appointments by one month. That's submitted by community development. And there are no items under nine point five, land use and development action items, and no items under nine point six, requests for public hearing.
Excellent. Is there any counselor that would like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Okay, do I have a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
All right, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Counselor Bossmans.
Yes.
Mayor Buell.
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yazi.
Yes.
And Counselor Yusuf.
Yes.
All right, moving on. Number eleven, there's no items. Number twelve, resolutions. Consideration of adoption. May we have a reading of item twelve point two?
Thank you. This is a resolution to amend the two thousand and twenty-four adopted budget for the purpose of budget amendments to the two thousand and twenty-four appropriations.
Mayor and council, we will have Devin Schmidt, our Chief Financial Officer, start off this presentation, but will also be accompanied by Sarah Hill, our Transportation Director, Scott McLean, our Assistant Parks and Recreation Director, Marty Poole, our Sustainability Manager, and Eva Hinson, our Housing Innovations Programs Manager.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Devin Schmidt, Chief Financial Officer. So this is a resolution amending the two thousand and twenty-four budget. So on this resolution this evening, we will be presenting some grant reappropriations for any unused funds from two thousand and twenty-three as well as a few reappropriations of some capital projects for consideration. So as council can see, this is the summary analysis for the city of Durango operating funds. As reflected here, there is sufficient funds to cover the amendments requests in the upcoming slides. Similarly, in our capital fund, you can see that there is sufficient funds to cover the request for this amendment. And with that, I'm gonna have Sarah take you through our transportation items. And with that, I'm going to have Sarah take you through our transportation items.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Buell and Council, Sarah Hill, Transportation Director. So I have a few budget amendment requests. They're all related to appropriating the expense for grants that we were awarded. The first project is the Zero Emission Vehicle Transition Plan for Transit. This plan is going to outline our transition from gasoline to electric transit fleet in keeping with the strategic plan goals. And then also, it is a requirement federally in order to apply for any electrification funding moving forward. So we need to get this plan accomplished. We were awarded two different grants totaling eighty thousand dollars. There's no local contribution for either one of these grants, so they will be reimbursed fully. But it is a reimburse based expense. So we're responsible for the upfront cost, and then we'll get paid at the end. So our twenty twenty four adopted budget includes the revenue portion of these grants, but not the expense portion. So this is a simple request to add that expense line item so that we can be reimbursed by our grant. And the plan is currently underway, and it will be presented to council sometime this summer for your consideration of adoption. The next project is Transit Fleet Expansion and Replacement, and this project is supported by four different grants. It will replace one pair of transit bus and expand our fleet by four loop route buses and one electric bus. That'll be our first electric transit vehicle. And these grant totals again were included in the twenty twenty four budget, and the expense line items have to be reappropriated from various grant years based on the contracting delay with C dot that we had. Oh, I'll go back and say the total amount requested is six hundred ninety thousand eight hundred eighty six dollars. Eighty percent of that is grant supported. And then the twenty percent is from the Transit Division's contribution to our Vehicle Equipment Services Fund, which was previously SRF. And then lastly, the Multimodal Division was awarded a Safe Streets for All Grant. And this was a nationally competitive program with the intent of calming speeds, slowing speeds down, and reducing traffic crashes. We will be developing this plan in conjunction with the Police Department, nine one one, D F P D, C dot, and the County Operations, Emergency Management Operations as well, looking for a list of approved traffic calming features and developing an evacuation escape route, things of that nature. So once again, the revenue, the total project, three hundred and seven thousand eight hundred dollars was included in the twenty twenty four budget, and we're requesting that expense to be appropriated as well. Thank you.
Oh, great.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Eva Hinson, Housing Innovation Manager. Similar to Sarah's presentation, we did account for the expenditures for most of the items that we'll be presenting before you. This is reappropriating funding revenue for the division and for community development on a variety of projects that we have at play into twenty twenty four, carrying over from twenty twenty three. And again, we'll have some invoices and additional expenditures that we'll go over before you. First, we will note for the Fair Share Inclusionary Zoning Program, the city was awarded back in twenty twenty two, actually. So this has been almost a two year project. A hundred and twenty thousand dollars from DOLA, and we're asking to reappropriate approximately eighty one thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars in revenue, and accounting for that twenty five percent local match requirement for this particular grant for twenty seven thousand three hundred and four dollars. Again, this is for the Fair Share Inclusionary Zoning Program updates and support the grant requirements by also improving and updating our licensing and permitting processes within community development and our engineering office through the Open Gov software that we already have. So we're actually enhancing that for our customers. The next item will be for La Posta with the Traffic Study and Corridor Design. Again, this is a carry forward. This has been ongoing as well from twenty twenty two for four hundred and forty seven thousand seven hundred and ninety one dollars. And this is a continued process project with coordination with the Economic Development Alliance with this. And again, for our scope of work with our engineering services contract. And our last grant project before you is our American Rescue Plan Act funding that the city received. We are asking for the reappropriation of one million nine hundred and thirty one thousand two hundred and eighty dollars to the Housing Division Budget for supporting and assisting building off of our successes while increasing inventory and bridging the disparity of home and rental prices. And with that, I'll kick it off to the next person, which is Trash and Recycle.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. I'm here to present on three appropriations for the Sustainability Division under the Trash and Recycle section of the budget. So the first is an appropriate zero impact on the fund balance, but we have secured one hundred thousand dollar grant from the Colorado Energy Office in conjunction with the fifty thousand dollars appropriated from the Lodger's Tax Council Discretionary Fund for our twenty twenty four e-bike rebate program. This will be a program, income qualified program only this year, but building off the successes of the twenty twenty three e-bike rebate program and all of the benefits that e-bikes can provide to community members to reduce traffic and parking congestion, to provide transportation opportunities for those who don't have access to a vehicle, don't have a driver's license, and improve mobility for those that maybe a traditional bicycle, maybe not as physically able or other reasons that a traditional bicycle doesn't work. And of course, the emissions reduction from switching from vehicles to cleaner power or cleaner type of transportation. The next is we've secured a twenty five thousand dollar grant from the Colorado Water Conservation Board in conjunction with a ten thousand dollar commitment from Visit Durango to pilot a turf grass replacement program. This topic has been gaining traction across the state of Colorado, looking for areas where we're perhaps using excess water use for irrigating turf grass when less water intensive or more water wise landscaping could be an option. So this partners with local landscapers to provide consultation to eligible properties. And and then that puts the properties on a list for up to four thousand dollars in rebates to actually implement those changes from water intensive irrigate landscaping that requires a lot of irrigation. I'll note that the Visit Durango portion, and then the proportional match from the grant funding would go to hospitality businesses. And then the commitment from the City of Durango goes to nonprofits, churches of any religion, educational institutions, or multifamily complexes. So that's the reason that we're doing a joint share of the match funding. And last is to reappropriate fund balance for completing the E V charging stations at the library. And we have secured, and this would be putting on the budget, the eighteen thousand dollar charge ahead Colorado Grant Award that we received for this project. I'll note that this project also included a lot of design to future proof that site for additional installations of higher power E V charging as that becomes a need throughout our community. And we see the growth of the use at the library. And now on to Scott McLean for Parks and Rec.
Good evening, Mayor Buell, City Council, Scott McLean with Parks and Recreation. We are requesting sixty thousand for from the two thousand fifteen designated tax. And this is for design engineering services, Lake Night Horse, Four Line Stabilization. So the wind typically comes out of the west on the reservoir. Our beach and facilities are on the east side of the reservoir. We have wave break that has been installed prior to when we had the inflatable play structure that went in. So the center part of the beach is protected. The north and south sides of it are getting a lot of erosion. We're losing area there, and it's cutting into some of the amenities that we've put in. So this is designed to initially look at some different alternatives, what will work to both lessen the erosion, but also be suitable for use in a beach type area where you've got kids and people playing with no shoes. And then the second part of it would be the bid construction documents that will set us up to bid the work. The Bureau of Reclamation, we have a fifty fifty cost share agreement. So both the the design for this and then the eventual project would be covered. Be paid back after the project's done for that work. Thank you. I'll head on to over to finance at this point.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Elliot Fitz, Budget and Finance with City of Durango. First Amendment proposal we have for you tonight is a reappropriation of funds for the big picture River City Hall move and a request for increase for A C for that building. Being that it was a former school, it did not have A C, and since we've been in it for a little while, we have recognized the need for that. And for our staff and for our customers and partners in the community, it would be a very beneficial thing to have, especially as we go into the summer months. So again, just a reappropriation of unspent funds from the project from twenty twenty three and an increase for the bids that we have received for A C. Second, we have the reappropriation of forty three thousand nine hundred and seventy eight dollars to continue our partnership with a powerhouse for their HVAC project. That was something that we'd worked with them on last year, and their construction timeline has pushed into this year. So we want to continue that partnership and reappropriate the funds accordingly so that we can get it over to them. And with that, that is our, this is our recommendation to City Council for the resolution. Thank you very much.
All right, do I have a motion?
Okay, I make the motion that we we approve resolution R two zero two four zero zero two three for the various sums to be spent by the agencies and amounts and purpose set forth for the capital grant and operating expenditures for the City of Durango, Colorado for that twenty twenty four budget year.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, council discussion.
Just really quick, Elliot, there was an eighty percent increase on the A C. Was that just because of like parts or system disruption for supply chain, or is it labor?
Where are you seeing the eighty percent increase?
Well, because it was originally two hundred and fifty grand that was reallocated, and then an additional hundred and ninety.
No, I'm sorry. So the two hundred and fifty four was unspent funds from the twenty twenty three, the original budget that we had. We do have trailing invoices for work completed at the end of the year that we still need to pay. The budget increase of a hundred and ninety, that's just for the A C. And that does include an increase of about ten percent for cost overruns. So, yeah, sorry for the confusion.
Oh, that's okay. I misunderstood. So thanks for thanks for the clarification. Appreciate that.
No problem.
Anyone else? Okay, I'm super excited for our our first electric bus. Yes, thank you. And then, yeah, all the projects, you know, just going forward. So can I have a roll call?
Mayor Buell.
Yes.
Councillor Woodruff.
Yes.
Councillor Bossmans.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Yasi.
Yes.
And Councillor Youssef.
Yes.
All right, number thirteen, there's no items. Number fourteen, public comment on non agenda items. On non agenda items. All right, can we have the rules played, please?
And Mayor, there are two people who've signed up to speak under public comment for non agenda items. And both of them are here in council chambers, or they indicated they were. The first person is Heather Herb, followed by Gail Harris.
They're both not here. I think they they were here for Earth Week. Okay, sorry, yes, yeah. And they're not here at the moment.
Okay.
So we will. And no one online?
No one signed up that indicated they're online?
Perfect. All right, moving on, number fifteen, other administrative items. Can we have a reading of fifteen point one, Ben?
Item fifteen point one is a motion to convene as the local licensing authority to conduct to conduct a hearing to consider the revocation of Eighth Avenue Tavern's liquor license.
Okay, Mr. Morgan, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. You recall that this was on the the agenda at the last meeting, and we continued it because the licensee requested time to hire an attorney. He did, in fact, hire an attorney who's been in touch with my office and has proposed a settlement agreement. So I'm going to request that this be tabled into the May seventh meeting. At that point, all the things that have been proposed in the settlement should have been complied with, and it would become moot. If they're not, we would have the hearing on that day. So I'm requesting a motion to table until the May seventh meeting.
I moved to table agenda item fifteen point one until May seventh meeting, please.
I'll second.
Excellent. Council discussion? All right, roll call.
Councillor Youssef.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Yasi. Councillor Woodruff.
Yes.
Mayor Buell.
Yes.
And Councillor Bossmans.
Yes.
All right, number sixteen, introduction of ordinances and request for public hearing. These are action items with limited discussion. Just as a reminder, we're just deciding if the council will support to set a public hearing for these items. At the public hearing, there'll be time for questions and discussion. So can we have a reading of sixteen point one?
Thank you. Item sixteen point one is a request for public hearing and introduction of ordinance for land use and development code text amendments regarding fair share program and the administrative manual that's scheduled for May seventh, twenty twenty four.
Great. Do I have a motion?
Move to open a public hearing for introduction of ordinance for land use and development code text amendments regarding fair share program and administrative manual.
Second.
Excellent. Council discussion? All right, roll call.
Mayor Pro Tem Yasi.
Yes.
Councillor Woodruff.
Yes.
Councillor Youssef.
Yes.
Councillor Bossmans.
Yes.
And Mayor Buell.
Yes. All right, Ben, can I have a reading of sixteen point two?
Item sixteen point two is a request for a public hearing to consider the adoption of the updated Durango Mesa Area Plan that's scheduled for May seventh, twenty twenty four.
Do we have a motion from council?
Move to open up the public hearing to consider the adoption of the updated Durango Mesa Area Plan for May seventh, twenty twenty four.
Seconds.
Council discussion? All right, roll call.
Councillor Bossmans. Mayor Buell.
Yes.
Councillor Woodruff.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Yasi. And Councillor Youssef.
Yes.
Excellent. And a reading of sixteen point three.
Sixteen point three is a request for a public hearing to consider the Durango Mesa Park Preliminary Platte, a replat of three existing plats that's scheduled for May seventh, twenty twenty four, also submitted by Community Development.
Do we have a motion from council?
I'll make a motion to.
Looks it up.
I'll make a motion to move Ezra.
Have a second.
Second.
Council discussion? All right, roll call.
Mayor Buell?
Yes.
Councillor Yusuf?
Yes.
Councillor Bossmans?
Yes.
Councillor Woodruff?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Yazi?
Yes.
And one more, and I have a reading of sixteen point four, Ben.
Item sixteen point four is a request for a public hearing and introduction of an ordinance to transfer the fee titled land for the Durango Mesa Trails to the Durango Mesa Park Foundation in exchange for easements scheduled for May seventh, twenty twenty four, submitted by Community Development.
Great, do we have a motion from council?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Council discussion? We're gonna nail this, you guys. Roll call.
Councillor Yusuf?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yazi?
Yes.
Councillor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Buell?
Yes.
And Councillor Bossmans?
Yes.
All right, number seventeen, other new business, can I have a reading of seventeen point one?
Item seventeen point one is authorization for the mayor to sign a support letter for a development of local affairs grant to fund the design of phases two and three of the downtown's next step project submitted by Devin King.
Sarah Hill, stand again for Devin King. So this is a request to authorize the mayor to sign a letter of support on behalf of council for a DOLA grant that would fund the final two phases of the downtown next step project. And just as a reminder, the first two phases are adopted for funding, and this will not obligate this council to make a decision about funding phase three. This would just give us an opportunity to fund that and mitigate the cost to the city if, if awarded, so we would hear if we, we receive the award in June, and we would come back to council for the budgetary appropriation request at that time. The total request is six hundred and forty thousand dollars for the grant award, and then city's local contribution would be one hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Phase two has been adopted for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so we would be returning two hundred and ninety thousand back to the twenty fifteen half cent fund should we be awarded this grant. I'm happy to answer any questions. But the recommendation of the Transportation Department is that council approve the submission of an application to the Colorado Department of Local Affairs Grant Program for the purpose of mitigating the local cost to complete the remaining two phases of design of downtown's next step.
Excellent, thank you, Sarah, do we have a motion from council?
A move to authorize the mayor to sign a support letter for Department of Local Affairs or DOLA grant to fund the design of phases two and three of the downtown's next step project.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Excellent, council discussion?
Oops, sorry, thank you for that presentation, okay, so would, would phases two and three of the design put us at sixty percent design, or where, where are we at on that?
So this would, we're currently through thirty percent of phase one of design. So this would, and that is for the blocks from College to Eighth Ave. So this request would fund the design of Eighth Ave to Fourteenth, or sorry, Eighth Street to Fourteenth Street. So it would finalize the full design.
Okay, so at the end of this granting and design, then we would potentially have a complete design for downtown next steps and possibly an estimate of cost?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
All right, roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Yazi?
Yes.
Councillor Woodruff?
Yes.
Councillor Yusuf?
Yes.
Councillor Bossmans?
Yes.
And Mayor Buell?
Yes. Does any other councillor have items to bring up under new business? Okay, seen none, item nineteen, or eighteen, requests for excused absences. Okay, and finally, number nineteen, adjournment, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, meeting adjourned.